Welcome to our regular meeting of the Board of Education for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All board members are in attendance today. We also don't appear to have open forum tonight, so no speakers. We need to approve tonight's agenda, so I need a motion to do that, please. By Director Bowian, a second, please.
Second.
By Director Velazquez, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero. Then we'll move on to the consent agenda, which includes, these are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? So made by Director Burnick, a second.
Second.
By Director Alstead. The consent agenda, I should say, includes the financials, which are check, wire transfer, dispersment summary, wire transfer EFT and ACH banking activity, the bank reconciliation statement from January, PMA financial, monthly wire detail, monthly health dental wire detail, monthly check detail, monthly ACH detail. It also includes our monthly enrollment report, our approval of school board minutes from February, personnel items, including candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, and leaves of absence. All in favor to approve the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, seven zero. And we have a resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Can I get a motion to accept?
So made.
By Director France, and a second.
Second.
By Director Velazquez. And this month's donations, gifts include Nicole Havlick donating thirty dollars towards student food insecurities. All in favor of accepting this gift?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll call, sorry guys, I went too fast. So I will start with Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Velazquez?
Aye.
Aye.
Director France, okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes, seven zero. Thank you. And we are moving on to Laker Pride. We have a lot of Laker Pride tonight. We have a full house, some very young people in the house, which is really fun. I'll pass it off to Dr. Thomas.
Thank you so much Chair Crosby, Board of Directors, and yes, we have a buzz of energy in the room this evening. And we've got three points of pride that I'd like to showcase tonight. One was a carryover from our last meeting. We had some scheduling issues with students, so we wanted to make sure we can get them all here at the same time. So we've got a little bit heavier of a celebration tonight, but that's okay. It's all about our students. So the first Laker Pride I'd like to discuss is Sonya Pirani. She is a junior at Prior Lake High School, and I've mentioned her before in the past around the winter break time or so, because she also has a nonprofit, Sonya's, I think Sonya's Hope for Children, or Sonya's Hope, I believe it's called, and does a lot of fundraising for backpacks and toy drives, et cetera, book drives. So this is a person who has really committed to her community, and I think I mentioned that she was in a recent magazine as well. And tonight, we are going to recognize Ms. Pirani for her second book that she has published. And this book is entitled High Tide. And I would like to ask Sonya to please come forward if she's here, out there. Is she out there? Not here. Okay. Well, she is not here tonight, but I was going to have her speak a little bit about her book. But I will say, you know, she is an amazing student, as we have so many throughout our district, who are committed to not only their academic excellence, but they're also taking care of their communities. So we want to congratulate her for her accomplishments and that we continue to support her and the thousands of others that we serve to make us proud here in our district and make our world proud as well. So I have a plaque that will make sure that we get to her as well. So can we all congratulate Sonya Pirani? Okay, the next group that we have is Redtail Ridge. As the board and our community may know, we are in the process of going through a math curriculum adoption. And many of our teachers throughout the district are engaging our students in what are called math talks. And so tonight, we have students from Redtail Ridge, along with first grade teachers Brittany Howe and Katie McGinnis, and they are going to demonstrate math talks. So if we can have you all come forward.
They look like ten frames.
The three ten frames all add together to make forty.
We're going to roll the dice, and we're going to make three different numbers. And then you guys are going to work together to figure out how many tiles we have all together. Of total. There you go. How many tiles do you see all together? Tell them how you would solve this?
I know seven plus three equals ten, and I know that ten plus seven equals seventeen, so I got seventeen.
I don't know what seven plus seven plus three equals, but I do know seven plus seven equals fourteen, and fourteen plus three equals something, but I know fourteen plus four equals seventeen, I mean seven, so fourteen plus three would equal seventeen.
I did seven plus three equals ten, so I know ten plus seven, which was the last number, equals seventeen, so it equals seventeen.
And how did you know that seven plus three equals ten? Was it just something you knew? No? Did you see something up here? How did you know? Those of you that made that group of ten. We thought we would do it one more time, and this time, a first grader is going to come up with you, and then you guys can talk with them and work through them together. Build it up here. Talk with that adult next to you about how would you solve it, or how would... Work together as a team.
Take the four plus five, and it equals sixteen, equals ten.
Awesome. How do you write it on your whiteboard then?
You didn't have a good marker? You know what? Do you want to use my paper instead?
There you go.
So you chose to do six plus three equals nine, because you know that? Is that how you were solving?
Pressure's on.
All right. So is anybody ready to share their strategy for how they were putting together the number six, five, and three?
It's easier than ten. I know five plus three is eight, so, and then I added eight and six, and it was fourteen.
I know that six, I don't know what six plus three plus five is, but five plus minus one is four, and if we take that extra one and put in, and I know that that six and three is nine, and nine plus one equals ten, and use that four, with ten plus four equals fourteen, so the answer is fourteen.
I know that six plus five is eleven, and eleven plus three is fourteen. I did six plus three equals nine, and then we can take the one from the five and add it to that, so eight equals ten. And then we can plus the four that was in the five, and it'll just be four, so ten plus four equals fourteen. Yep.
Did you kind of look at those squares and move them around to make a complete ten frame?
I didn't use those, but I just looked to see which numbers I should use.
That group of ten?
So I want to thank you all, students, want to thank you so much for your bravery to come and teach us, the adults, how to do math again, and using some of your strategies, your ten block strategies. Ms. Yetzer, the principal, did you want to say anything about what's happening in terms of math at the building and the curriculum?
Say that it's really fun to go into the classrooms, especially when they're using the math talks, because it's very different than when I learned math. Everything was memorized, you know, it was just that rote memorization of the math facts. And now they're seeing and understanding how they can get the same answer many different ways, and kids are feeling very successful. And one of the things that came out of these pilots is that with the curriculum that they are leaning toward and they really like, it really encompasses all learners, the real high, and those students that are struggling, without the teachers having to go and find more resources and more supplemental material. So it's really challenging the kids, and it's really making kids look at math in a different way, and it's very engaging, as you can see, even just tonight. So thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
What was the name of this math program?
The one that Katie and Brittany piloted was the Bridges Program.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say thanks to you and the staff, and of course, the kids that came tonight, taking time out of your schedule to show us how it really works. It does matter. It does impact us. So thank you.
I would like to see if the students wouldn't mind and staff to come back for a quick picture before you head out. And I've got certificates, Ms. Yetzer, I'll give with you.
Perfect.
And if we could have you all to stand right over here in the middle, and we'll get a picture for everyone.
Can do the rest, or we'll be right back.
Okay, that's quite all right. So while we're waiting for the other student, Chair Crosby and Board of Directors, we will be coming to you all with the results of the math pilots that we've been having in our schools this year, and let you know what our learnings from those pilots were, both from a teacher standpoint, as well as what we've seen in terms of the data for the students, and their feedback on that curriculum as well. So very exciting that we are able to, based upon our scores that we have seen historically, we knew something needed to be done differently. So really excited to be bringing this to you shortly. Congratulations. I want to thank you. Okay, I'm going to go back to our first one. Sonya Pirani actually came in just as I finished up, so probably got stuck in a little bit of traffic or something. So Sonya, we'd like to have you come forward. We're recognizing you for your accomplishments, both as an author, as well as a student leader, and very active in our community. And so we would like to give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about what inspired you to begin writing, and specifically, your latest book, High Tide.
Yeah, I've always been interested in writing since a young age, and it's just always something that sparked my interest. And in the future, I plan to go further in my education in college or university in English. So it's always just been something that struck a passion within me. And in around like fifth to sixth grade, I started writing this book, and unfortunately, it got published now. But it was a nice process to see how the publishing process worked, and this is my first time publishing a book. So the book is called High Tide. I have the book with me right now. And it just recently got published, because I finally got the opportunity to finish the editing and the production of the book. And it's been pretty successful, so I'm very grateful for that.
Well, we want to congratulate you for representing our district so proudly and so well, and I'll present you this certificate of appreciation.
Thank you.
Congratulations again. You want to come forward? Congratulations. Okay, my last one for tonight. We've got Twin Oaks Middle School. We have eighth grade students, along with their teachers, Renee Demille and Missy McFadden, and they are going to highlight Future City. And Future City is, as I'm talking, you all can come up, and if you need to move anything, prepare for their presentation, that'd be great. Future Cities is a hands-on cross-curricular education program that brings STEM to life for students in grades six through eight. Using the engineering design process and project management skills, students showcased their solutions to a citywide sustainability issue. This year's challenge asked students to address climate change in their city. Throughout the fall, students worked in teams of at least three students, an educator, and a volunteer, Prior Lake engineer, mentor, to bring their vision of their future city to life. They had to imagine what it's like to walk down the main street of a city 100 years in the future. What do they see, hear, smell, and feel? From this starting point, they had to design a futuristic city with innovative solutions to some of today's most pressing sustainability issues. The team here today competed at Dakota County Technical College on January 21st. They made it to the top five in the Minnesota region. This was the first for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools to be represented at this level. In the end, Future City combined the engineering design process with project management to imagine, research, design, and build our cities of the future. So with that, I will turn it over to the both of you to talk about the future of Prior Lake, I guess. Oh, here's a microphone, too. If one of you want to grab one. There we go. There you go. You bet.
Well, I'm Chloe Erickson.
I'm Megan Maslowski.
And this is our city, Varia Tera. Varia Tera is located on the coast of Iceland, 100 years in the future. It's a small town containing around 4,000 residents, I believe, and it focuses a lot on making our world a safe and healthy place.
So as we did research about climate change, one of the main producers of this issue, we realized is carbon, because there's a lot of it, and it absorbs heat, and then like distributes it. So one of the things that we did to reduce carbon is we initiated sod roofs to all of our buildings, because these plants, they absorb the CO2, and then they give off oxygen, which we need. Not only is that the thing, but they also tie into the wonderful green landscape of Iceland, because visual pollution is also a very big thing, and if we keep building in the way that we are building today, the world will not be a very pretty place.
Another ways we wanted to capture carbon is with our CCS system, which... Oh, there we go. It's called CCS, which stands for Carbon Capture and Storage. So basically, we take the carbon and water molecules in the air, and we separate them, and then push them under the ground into basalt rock, which is a porous volcanic rock. And so it'll absorb that carbon, and if it were ever to be dug up in the future, the carbon would be released back into the air. So it's a permanent solution to take carbon out of our atmosphere.
And then one of the final things we did with our city is we said no gasoline vehicles, which is kind of a hard thing to do with the way that we live today, because obviously, we rely on getting where we want to be, when we want to be there. And so one of the ways we tried to combat this issue was by making sure that there was a lot of other transportation available, such as like biking and walking. And we put all of the things that people need to get to in their daily life kind of close together in the middle of the city, so that they could take a short five-minute bus ride to like their work or the supermarket, and then they could walk around and visit the stores and the police stations and all that kind of thing, without having to walk very far.
So like Megan said, all of our residents are put in a tight community, so that they can walk to wherever they need to. And if they don't want to walk, we have solar-powered buses that go all around our community. And in case of emergency, because we understand that not using gasoline is a huge risk, and sometimes having solar power is not going to work. So in emergency circumstances, we do have gasoline-powered vehicles that we only use under emergency circumstances, because we'd rather have someone be saved than not use gas all the time. Thank you.
Any questions, just in case? No worries, no worries.
Any questions?
Why aren't we doing this now?
I don't know. Or sooner.
That was partly rhetorical, but thank you. How long did this take you to build and come up with this concept?
So we spent about three months writing an essay, and the reason why it took so long was because we were only really focusing on it every other week, so we could get in our other education with earth science, which is the class that we're in right now. And then after we finished our essay, we spent every day, I believe for a month and a half, working on this model and putting it together.
Incredible job, ladies.
Thank you.
Well, girls, I have to say, a couple of months ago, I was at a Scott County regional meeting, and they happen once a month. And I don't know if any of you were at this particular scale meeting, but that day, we actually had someone from a local company, Bolton &amp; Mankin, engineering firm, that was presenting on future cities. And this concept that you all are doing and sharing tonight, literally was the two-hour presentation of that morning, to envision what can a future Prior Lake look like. Some of the same technologies and the same kind of design thinking that you all are modeling tonight, that's real work. Like, that's what is happening in our city right now. So I applaud your efforts for leaning into that level of leadership and making it as far as you did in the competition, but it's much bigger than the competition. It's actually that life skill that you're gaining, that you're going to actually transform our world. So thank you so much for what you do. We have a couple of staff. Did you want to share anything at all, or anything to add?
Missy McFadden, gifted and talented specialist for the secondary, and so I help Renee over here with implementing this project that obviously took a long time. But I think it's what Dr. Thomas said. It's really the life skills that you're teaching, that, you know, teamwork, collaboration, you know, dividing work up. How do we do that? How do we like respectfully disagree when we don't know how we're going to work through something? It's a lot of that stuff besides just the project in itself, and we're lucky- Is one on my bucket list? Oh, yeah, they do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well done.
We appreciate how articulate you both are and sharing your story, too. Thank you.
You can see what they needed, right?
Yeah, really impressive, really impressive.
For the Laker Pride, Chair Crosby.
Personnel items, we have some district retirements that we're sad and proud to announce and accept tonight. So before I list them, I need a motion to accept, please.
So made.
By Director Boyan, seconded by Director Atkinson. So tonight, we'll call these out because they're pretty impressive, and it's a lot of years of service that we're very thankful for. Nancy Teis, our Activities Administrative Assistant at the high school, 22 years of service. Teardrops. Kimberly Dover, kindergarten teacher at Five Hocks, 23 years of service. She probably watched a lot of kids graduate as well that she helped. Jody Ernst, special ed teacher at Tom's, 14 years of service. Greg Hartman, math teacher at the high school, 20 years of service. Daniel Larkin, physical ed health teacher at Twin Oaks, 28 years of service. Mary Jo Luthmer, third grade teacher at Hamilton Ridge, 20 years of service. Bridget Pope, Frau Pope, German teacher in the high school for 15 years of service. And lastly, Kelly Williams, second grade teacher at Glendale, 30 years of service. And she actually was there and part of the planning for building and envisioning Glendale. That was, I think that was 97 it was built. So lots of wonderful contributions to our district that we're really thankful for and sad to see go. We will be honoring these retirements at the District Retirement Celebration on Thursday, May 18th at the high school. Sadly, all in favor of approving the following, the district retirements. Aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0. Unfinished business. So at the study session, we... The previous study session, we, Director Oak, presented the three-year achievement and integration plan for approval tonight. So I need a motion to approve.
So made.
By Director Burnick and seconded by Director Velasquez. And so we reviewed it. If we have questions or concern or conversation, now's our opportunity. I know Sam is here to answer any questions, so.
Chair Crosby, if I may, and Board of Directors, we actually, based upon our work session last week, was it last week, with the board, we got some feedback from you that evening as well as some additional questions that came in. Based upon some of that feedback, we have made some changes into the budget, not significant, but again, wanting to be very transparent with you all on where we're kind of moving some of the resources and supporting staff and supporting students more. And so I've asked Director Sam Oak to come forward and speak overview of some of those changes.
So the big piece that we took out of the achievement integration budget is the, excuse me, the cost of equometrics. We decided that the district had just implemented a new survey with the Studer Education Survey. So we're going to see if some of those questions will lend into some of our work around equity and therefore taking that out of the budget, therefore freeing up more money for direct student support there. In terms of what's put on the summary, there are some minor adjustments from there on as well. We've increased the direct student services to 640,000 because we need the 80% threshold there. Therefore, we took 5,000 auto PD and put that into direct student services, which brought us up to the 80% there. And the remainder of the cost towards equometrics, right now, we're putting that into professional development as a placeholder, but if need be, we can make that adjustment in terms of actual spending as the program develops over the years.
Great, thank you. Any more, any questions or comments before we vote, given the changes in the plan?
Sam, this is, the goals itself didn't change. So the, for instance, goal one and two are the same, and goal three, what about the percentage of distribution for those goals? So we have the four-year graduation rate to increase that. We have other goals and strategies associated with the academic and culturally relevant curriculum as well as the continuous improvement plan. Is that all still the percentages?
It's all the same, yep. All the goals are still the same, all the targets are still the same.
Okay. Sam?
I think, if I may, just make a comment. First of all, I want to thank you for all the work you put into it. I have found myself just feeling heavy regarding my vote on this today. The things that I am absolutely for are the support to our students as far as the deans and the tutoring. I feel really good about that. There's other things, such as the surveys and even the wonderful event that I attended, the caring and committed conversation event with the elementary students. It was a wonderful day. It was put on really well. My question to myself is, do those types of events help our students achieve more academically? And because of, because of, you know, a feeling of unsure of how I should vote, I know it's not the space for me to vote right now, but I just want to say, given, given my, I don't even know how to explain it, other than a heaviness of how I should vote on this, I learned long ago that if I'm not sure, I'm sure. And so my vote will reflect that, but it's not to say that I am not in support of the support staff, and it's not to say that I am in disagreement with some of the work done. I think that, given the plan, I want to see more, I'd like to see specifically how this will increase academic achievement. And over the last years, since we've had this fund in place, that our academic achievement has not increased. And I know we've come out of a pandemic, and there's many things that factor in, and it's not easy. And I'm finding myself in a really hard place on how to vote. So yeah, that's just some comments that I wanted to make.
Thank you for the feedback.
And I have some things I'd like to share as well. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for all your hard work on the plan, as well as the work that you do to support the students and the teachers in our district, as well as answering all the questions that I've specifically had around this plan. So thank you. I'd like to recognize and thank you for finding a way to use the survey companies that we have in-house so that we can take that projected cost and use it for teacher tutoring or interpretation services, as I saw the changes on the plan. So thank you for that. Secondly, I'd like to recognize the work that the liaisons do in our district to ensure that all students' families are aware of the amazing opportunities that we have in our district, both in and outside of the classroom. I think that's incredibly important, and thank you for that. While I agree that it's important for students to have strong global awareness of different cultures, I believe that it's even more important for our students to be able to graduate with the tools necessary to compete in a global market. My concern, much like Amy's, is that we take, for example, our graduation rate at the ALC is only, I'm sorry, my graduation rate at the ALC is only 45%. And at the high school in 2022, only 45% of our students are proficient in math, 62% in reading, and 44.9 in science. I'd like to see more focus on this plan focused on student academic achievement. And I know I had emailed you some suggestions that have been used in other districts, and a couple of those ideas are as follows. Independent reading level assessments, college and career readiness, comprehensive district-wide math instruction and support, and comprehensive district-wide reading instruction and support. So I just wanted to share that with you tonight, my feelings on where I think we can see, where I would like to see some of this money focused towards academic achievement.
Were members other comments?
Sam, can you remind us, how much have we invested into integration and achievement in the past?
It started out at around $14,000, and then it jumped up to around $400,000, and in the past couple of years, it's gone up to $800,000. And these are additional money provided to the district outside the general funds.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, I appreciate that. Appreciate all the hard work that has gone into the integration and achievement plan. I know Dr. Thomas has mentioned this in the past, I share the same sentiment. Show me where you spend your money, and I'll show you what you value. And with this plan and what we see here, granted, we have not seen all of the results yet, we also haven't necessarily invested in this area. We have a plan that's going to get us on that trajectory and an investment, a sound investment, that will also help us establish a benchmark so that we can continue to grow. I don't have anything more to say than that. I support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I think one thing, as we talk about results, the targets that we set and the goals that we set on the grants here, we have seen that we've met those target areas. For example, at the beginning of this past plan here, we set a target to increase our graduation of our black students from around 68% to 80%, and we hit that target as well. So there's a growth in that area. As of November or December, when we put together the World's Best First Report, we were on track to reduce the absences of our native students and also our students who come from economically challenged families as well. So I do believe that this grant here and the programs that we put in place in this grant has been helping students.
Thank you.
I want to point out that the money here does not come out of the general fund, it is extra money that comes down from the state. And where I do agree that some of the measurement via survey, we're going to have to hone that out as we become more mature in this process, it is money we would not have had had we not received these funds, and therefore some of the student support services, such as deans, et cetera, wouldn't exist. And I do not want to remove that at any cost. Also, we're not still even getting nearly what other districts are getting, mostly because of our location and our percentages, et cetera, but it's $800,000, and I'll take it. We need it, and it's money we can still use to service students, and we don't have to take it out of the general fund.
Thank you.
I agree with Mary. I think I spoke on that at the meeting two weeks ago, that the bulk of this is bodies in our buildings, and we all talk about that, and we talk about how these students need to be supported through many different vehicles. And this is money that is given to us to do this work, which I fully support, knowing what I've seen when I've been at the elementary schools and seen what the deans are doing. This is not single-handed work. This is taken a lot of hands, and I appreciate all the energy that they put into that every day.
Thank you. And I would like to add, too, on top of the dean's position that we fund, the liaison position as well, to meet the needs of our changing populations and language needs in terms of our growing diversity in our district is vitally important as well because our liaisons do help build that connection and the relationship with both students and families and be that bridge and communication for our teaching staff also.
Can I ask a question? The question that keeps coming to my mind, Sam, is if we, and I did send an email to you today, if we did not receive this funding, would we, I'm assuming we would have to make...
Yes.
Are all of the liaison, are all the staffing positions that are listed, are they all new since the A&amp;I funding? Are they all positions that weren't around prior to the three, three school years, I think it was three years ago, when we started getting about $14,000? Before that, funding came from the state? And I do agree, like, I don't want to say no to funding for our district, but were all of the, you know, budgeted staffing positions, were they all created since that?
I don't have the full history of that, but I do know the changes in my department, though we only had a part-time American Indian ed liaison, not a coordinated position, and now we've been able to increase that to a full-time American Indian ed coordinated position. We only had a part-time Spanish-speaking liaison and not an East African Somali liaison in our district, and we've been able to add a Somali liaison into our district with the support of our Achievement and Integration Grant. So those positions are new to the district here. There was not a Director of Equity and Inclusion position, and that came about because of the Achievement and Integration Grant. I'm less clear about the dean, but I know in the past few years, the majority of their funding has been coming out of Achievement and Integration.
Thank you.
And I think I would add, too, since we're so lean already in our general funds, this is why I see, I really see the value in this additional dollars here to help support the bodies that we put into our buildings.
One last question, Sam. As far as the goals, are they specifically for protected class students, or are they for all students? Because when I think of achievement and, I mean, I'm hoping that this is for the achievement of the entire student body.
It's for the integration of the entire student body, and we are looking at the protected class students there. That is the purpose of the Achievement and Integration Grant here. But we know that there is value for the, for the interaction of our protected class students with the rest of our student bodies and being able to learn and grow from each other, hence why the activity of the caring and committed conversation as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
So I just want to, oh, I'm sorry, so I just want to add that I would agree with what has been said about the funding and the fact that we qualify for the funding, the $800,000 that we're getting from MDE. I want to be clear that I just want to make sure that as other districts, like I said, like I had pointed out, other districts have specifically pinpointed areas where we've seen, we know there's a concern with math scores, we know there's a concern with reading scores, and I would just like to personally see more focus on those areas of, like I mentioned at our last study session, I've gone back and I've seen how the achievement gap has actually widened, and I know that has a little bit to do with COVID, but I just feel that there's really, a lot of emphasis should be put on the academic achievement of our students in this plan.
I think, I think how we approach this plan here is the Achievement and Integration Funds don't act alone. I mean, there is a section in the Achievement and Integration Plan as well that talks about not duplicating other activities. So I, we view more this grant and this plan here as being a bridging of resources and students to the programs that are already here, and I'm very proud to say that our school district has offered a wide variety of offerings to support students both in the gap as well as accelerating students, too. So we looked at this grant opportunity here as being that bridge and facilitating that access for all students to reach into this program. So the grant doesn't...
But I just feel that there's really, a lot of emphasis should be put on the academic achievement of our students in this plan.
I think, I think how we approach this plan here is the Achievement and Integration Funds don't act alone. I mean, there is a section in the Achievement and Integration Plan as well that talks about not duplicating other activities. So I, we view more of this grant and this plan here as being a bridging of resources and students to the programs that are already here. And I'm very proud to say that our school district has offered a wide variety of offerings to support students both in the gap as well as accelerating students too. So we looked at this grant opportunity here as being that bridge and facilitating that access for all students to reach into this program. So the grant doesn't operate in a silo, but in support of other programming that's there so that we can open these access up for our students.
Sam, thank you so much for your work on this, your team's work on this. I think this, I said last time, this is a community initiative, not just a Prior Lake Savage Area Schools initiative. This is all of our money, all of our money. And I think this plan speaks to that. I realize when I say this out loud, it's comparing apples to oranges, but I just want to kind of put this into perspective where we are spending, realizing this comes out of the general fund. But we are spending more money on paving our parking lots, which is important. I don't want Jim to get mad at me. That is very important. We're spending that money without batting an eye, and we are spending less or getting less money coming in for achievement and integration for our students and our families. And I just think it's money well spent. And I appreciate what you're doing. And I think we can all learn a lot from this, myself included. And I look forward to being part of that. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I think we've heard from everybody. I'll just share briefly that I reiterate Mary's comments that it's eight hundred thousand dollars we wouldn't otherwise have. And when we spend that money that we wouldn't otherwise have to help some of our neediest kids, it's going to alleviate some of the work for all students. So that's pretty straightforward and clear to me. There's no, it's not very complicated to me that way. It helps all students because we're helping some of our neediest students, so we lift everyone up. I will also mention that in my brief research, Edina approved a one-point-three-million-dollar grant for achievement and integration. I saw in the paper, I believe it was about two million dollars that Burnswell approved last week for the same thing. So it's a no-brainer to me. I think I only see positive impact for our students, and I really believe in the work you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready for a vote? A vote? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That passes six-one. Thank you. Looking at new business, we have a monthly financial report update that we get monthly. Thank you, Director Fredrickson. If you would like to review any of that with us, we would greatly appreciate it. I'm sure we have some questions as well.
Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. It's my pleasure to present to you the January financial statements. There's just a couple of things I would like to highlight. On the first page, in the fund balance category, you'll see that it, fund balance is nineteen point eight. And as I said last month, these will change as the year goes on, just the way that revenue comes in and expenses go out. It's always going to be changed until the very end of the year when we get our financial audit done. But in this case, you recall a couple of months ago, we brought an amended budget to the board for approval. And when we built last year's budget for this current year, one of the things that was included in there was a projected deficit of four million dollars. And we had that built into the coming out of the fund balance. As we've reviewed this year, we still have a lot of positions that are vacant, so we're not spending expenses the way that we had anticipated last February and March. So when we did the amended budget, we took out that four-million-dollar deficit coming out of fund balance, which then gives you more of the unassigned fund balance, which is why the balance for the end of January looks to be nineteen point eight. And again, it'll change next month and the month after, and the month after. It's always going to reflect what our actual expenses are as we get through the year. Also, on the expenditure side, you'll notice that the debt service, there is an expenditure of fourteen million dollars. That's directly reflective of our refunding of the bond that we had. Again, that will even out by the end of the year. On the revenue and expenditure summary, you'll see in other funding that we're at about a hundred and nine percent of what our budget was. And those are dollars that we get in the district for miscellaneous things, and they just go into one fund. And then at the end of the year, we'd kind of distribute them throughout where it actually should be. So it's going to be higher this month, and at the end of the year, it'll even itself out and won't reflect that hundred and nine percent. And the federal sources, you'll see we're at thirty-two percent this year, thirty-four last year, and seventy percent the year before. And that 2021 year is directly reflective of the COVID dollars that we did receive. The 2022 debt service fund, that, the eighty-one percent for that year was, again, we sold the 2021 A bond, so that's reflective in there. And then the last thing I'd like to point out is on page nine, where we list all of the grants, you'll see towards the bottom, I think fourth from the bottom, there's an Agroful Trade Grant that has spent a hundred and forty-eight percent so far. There is some coding errors that were done on that grant, and we do have a meeting tomorrow to meet with the staff to review all of those expenses and do corrections to some of those codes that didn't get coded to the right grant. So that will look not overspent after January. Those are some of the highlights that I just thought I would bring up this month. Again, we'll, still working on a balance sheet. We'll have that as we probably by the end of the year, get that added to this packet. But I am happy to take any questions that you have.
Tammy, I have a question. What is the remainder of COVID funds for this year?
We are about, a little under two million.
Two million?
Yep. And most of those will be spent. There are some that are going for the summer, which is July and August. So there'll be, most of it will be spent.
Is it possible to get a recap of how it'll be spent?
Sure.
Okay.
Tammy, I have a question. On the unassigned fund balance, how much of that is still due to unfilled staff positions? Do we know?
I can double-check on that. Right now, I think the last time we looked at it, we were saving a little under, between eight hundred and a million dollars on the payroll. But that has been declining because we have been filling some of those positions. So I will double-check on that number two.
Thank you.
Tammy, when you say COVID funds will mostly be spent, like, this summer, do you expect any kind of leftover, and what happens to that money?
There are a couple of the categories that we have until September of 2025 to spend. So we still have another year, but there's only, I think, two, maybe three categories that carry out that far. But we've been doing a really good job of making sure that as we hit that deadline, that our funds have been mostly spent. So I think there was only one that we ended up giving money back, and it was like thirty, I think thirty-two thousand, because we just couldn't spend it. They wanted some vaccination kind of expenses, and we just didn't have any. So, but other than that one, we've spent just about all of the money.
Any other questions from board members?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, I know we increased our, almost, by almost a million dollars, our cost of transportation with the new busing contract and a few other things. Where does that end up? Is that, how is that split up between our expenditures? Is that in purchased services, the transportation?
Yeah, the way that the state divides our categories, the account code for transportation is in the three-hundred series, which is contracted services.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from board members? There's no action needed tonight, so.
Oh, I have a question. And this is just more related. Do you know when we're going to see our first run at the budget for next year, for the 2324? The first review of it?
It should be on the study session at the end of this month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Director Fredrickson. I think we're ready to move on to 2324 program and staffing reductions additions. It's a discussion only for planning purposes, so no board action is requested at this time. Director Herman, thank you.
Good evening. At this time, we do not have any program or staffing reductions or additions to bring forward. As Tammy mentioned, we'll have more information coming to the March twenty-eighth work session to go through. Update on the process, we have met with the elementary and secondary principals and building coordinators now two times, and continuing to work with them tomorrow to go through all of our enrollment numbers and staffing projections for our programs and for our buildings. And we will be bringing forward any additions on the March twenty-eighth work session. Happy to take any questions on the process, if any board members have any.
I have a question. So I observed a classroom on Friday, and I was surprised. They had three to five, five oh fours, special education kids in that class. And they had one para that kind of bounced in and out of the classroom, and she said she serviced seven different classes. And so my question is, is when you're speaking with the building administrators, are they giving you, like, here is, here's our, like, wish list of, if we could have a para for every classroom, this is what this would look like? Is that how the process works? Or like, how do they identify, or how do they voice to you their needs within their building? Like, is it different levels of requests? Like, here's everything we'd love, or, you know?
It's a great question. We look at current enrollment, and then we also look at our projections for where our different caseloads will be with EL students, with five fours, IEPs, to determine out our staffing ratios. From there, specifically with special education, Director Tuca and her team looks at the caseloads in each of the buildings to determine the number of educators that will be needed, and also the caseloads for the special education teachers. So it's really based off, all off of enrollment. If there's any additional programming needs or requests, that goes through our budget request process that we'll be bringing forward any of those requests and conversations at the next work session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Director Herman. We'll move on to the Kids Company 2324 rate approval. We reviewed all of this information at the study session in February, and board approval is requested. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So made.
By Director Atkinson, a second?
Second.
By Director France. Director of Community Ed Services, Dahl.
Not here.
Okay.
Nothing has changed, Chair Crosby, directors, since our presentation to you last week.
Great. Any comments or questions from board members?
I just, I appreciate the layout. I appreciate the additional flexibility and the fact that, for the most part, rates didn't change. So hats off to our community ed, because that's, that was quite a high bar.
If I may, Vice Chair, the rate increase that the community may see is due to the expansion of the hours, so it directly reflects the continuum of care. We did make one schedule shift based upon staffing. We had a five, four, three, and two day, and now we just have a five day. Outside of that, that's the most impact that students, or families may experience.
Actually, we took out the two-day and left the three and the five-day, which added the additional flexibility. And the additional hours is exactly what parents wanted. So, and that was a slight increase. It wasn't a huge one, and it was only really in, I think, the one program.
It was only in the one program from a financial increase.
All right. We will vote all in favor of the 2324 Kids Company rates.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. Moving on to school board meeting dates for 2324. Board approval is requested for this in order to draft the online calendar. Can I get a motion for approval?
So made.
By Director Velazquez, and a second?
Second.
By Director Boyan, okay. The only, I went through these dates today, sorry, go ahead.
Chair Crosby, I know that I wanted to make sure I mention this, that we've cross-referenced this also with some of our cities. And so we're on the off dates, particularly the city of Prior Lake, where we've had competing meetings in the past. And so we should be free and clear on this proposed meeting date calendar.
Great. The only date I saw it may be a conflict with, but not, maybe not, was March twenty-fifth, which it happens to be our spring break. So unless I have that wrong, I could have that wrong. Do I have that wrong, Martha? March twenty-fifth of next year. Well, maybe worth looking at. We can approve it and amend later if needed. Do I have those dates wrong?
Hmm.
Okay.
The ME looked okay, because of that one.
Yeah. I might have it wrong.
Dr. Edwards gives a thumbs up.
I was just seeing if he was awake back there. I have it wrong, and I need to update. I am sorry. I should have double-checked that. Okay, so all in approval for the 2324 school board meeting dates.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. This brings us to policy. The first reading of policies is Policy 516, Student Medication. We did have this introduced at the study session. The language and verbiage additions, I believe, are in your packet. Do we have any questions or things board members want to discuss? Looks good so far. Okay, thank you. No second reading of policies. The only policy up for approval tonight is Policy 515, which is Protection of People Records. We've seen it many times. It's some, some pretty minor language changes. I should ask for a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Boyan, and a second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez. Any questions or concerns about this policy before we vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven-zero. Administrator reports.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, board of directors. Got a couple of things, actually, this evening. The first one I'll start with is our weather protocols. We've had a snowy one, if you've not noticed. I think we are ranked number eight in the history, so it was a weather impactful season. And as I've jokingly shared with others, that is the one duty I would more than willingly reassign and delegate to anyone who's willing. All right. It is a challenge, and I want to acknowledge that with our community. Every decision that we make, it never fails. I get a handful of emails. We get a couple of phone calls. I'm sure there's things on social media. And I understand that the challenge that it can produce for families, particularly when we have working families, or families that might not have employment flexibility, the need to have someone stay home, whether it's a true snow day or if it's an e-learning day, and I'll talk a little bit about that. We know it's impactful. There are times where we have not called, and as you can imagine, I get calls on that as well. Why didn't you call school off today? Why didn't you have a delay today? You don't care about the kid's safety today. So, so we try to find that balance. The superintendents across the metro area are in touch with the National Weather Service, and we get special presentations by-- and we get special presentations by a variety of meteorologists that allows us to be as close, as accurate as possible. And again, I always jokingly say, the job of a meteorologist, you can be wrong, and you still go ahead and show up the next morning, because you can't control nature, and we get that. So we try to see what the forecast is projecting, and also try to make our determination as soon as we can, knowing that families are going to have to make some adjustments. So the sooner a family could know that, if they could know the night before, make arrangements, you know, with daycare, et cetera, or work schedules, we strive to do that. Jim and I are up pretty much throughout the evenings. We are up at 3:00 hitting roads. We are driving surfaces ourselves. We are hitting, you know, what's unique for us is that we've got some of our townships that have unpaved roads, which makes it extremely challenging. And our last snow cycle, I actually went out and we drove the dirt roads, which were not chipped. Learned a new technology term, when you chip versus salt on dirt. And it was a challenge. We had a couple of buses that went off those roads. So I can't close just a portion of our district down, and so it's all or none. And so I just want our community to understand the totality that goes into making these decisions. And then, of course, you make a decision, and then it doesn't snow, right? And so you have that, that does happen from time to time. And then this unique situation, this year, we actually called in advance, as pretty much everyone in the metro area and a variety of businesses did, because it was forecasted to be a very significant weather event. And I understand that there was a family who called me about, why would you make that two days in advance, or two days in a row? At that point, we were making the same decision and staying consistent with what every other district around, because what we also are aware of is that our staff live in various places too. And, and when districts are shutting down, will we have teachers available to come in? And will we even get subs? And those are the things that we have to consider. So a lot goes into making that decision. Now, with that said, we have a couple of options that are new to us, and that is the ability to utilize e-learning days. And I want to be the first to say that e-learning is less than ideal. Just, I'll just be the first to say that. Now, there are many students that e-learning works great for, but for many, e-learning is a challenge. And we saw that for many years due to a pandemic. And we also know that in this situation, we have been leveraging some of our e-learning days that are granted by the state of Minnesota, MDE, to use up to five e-learning days. And we've also been learning this year our protocols around elementary technology, and we've had to make some adjustments there. So a big shout out to our elementary principals and the staff to, excuse me, find ways to be responsive. And we have been being proactive in sending devices home in advance of the possibility of an e-learning day. And the rationale for MDE was to allow for learning to continue, knowing that we had significant setbacks in the past due to the pandemic. Are there opportunities that we can have some semblance of instruction that would occur? And so, again, I know it's not the ideal replacement of in-person learning, but it is some type of learning that we can engage with our students. And it's very unpopular as a superintendent to not allow kids to have true snow days. And our challenge with that is that we have employee contracts that allow for one true snow day, where that is covered. Any snow days subsequent, like completely called snow, snow days, those days aren't financially covered or budgeted. So, so for example, if we were to have used snow days and not e-learning days financially right now, we don't have the budget aligned to pay the contracts for those days, and/or we would have to have staff come in when students are done to make up the day that we paid you for, for that snow day. Did I get that correct? Okay. Just want to make sure I'm tracking in my own head. So if we are looking at doing something like wanting to have true snow days, where there's no expectation of instruction, we're going to have to revisit budget and contracts as they currently sit. They would not allow me to do that unless we want to add days to our school calendar for our staff. We've got a couple of staff out there that I see some heads. They're saying, yes, Michael. So as you can see, it's a challenge all the way around. There's not going to be a pretty solution on the table that all will say, this is going to work for me 100%. Because either students will be potentially impacted by e-learning, staff will be impacted by extending their school year, and God forbid, we have like a real decimating weather year where we have staff and students making up time, because there's so much. Because we also have state minimums for days of school and hours of instruction. And so, for example, and I printed some of this stuff off. MDE requires that we have 165 instructional days for grades one through 11, and they have to meet the minimum of instructional hours. And that's 850 hours for full-day kindergarten, 935 hours for grades one through six, and 1020 hours, 1,020 hours for grades seven through 12. And so as you look at that formula and where we're at with, we have right now, at the elementary level, the possibility of two e-learning days left. And at the secondary level, we have just one e-learning day left. And we are at roughly 166 days. It varies by grade, but I got a plan to the lowest denominator, because if one goes under, like I said, I can't say, oh, grades nine and 10, and you can be home in grades 12, you have to come to school. It's all or none. So we have 166 days remaining for our seniors out of 165, so essentially a one day of grace before we have to adjust our schedules to accommodate additional instructional minutes. That might mean shaving minutes off of passing time, minutes off of lunchtime, to find ways that over the rest of the year that we can accumulate a day, according to MDE. And that would be the same for a variety of different grade levels as well. So for example, we have 168 days for elementary, and we have about 170 for middle school. So, and that, again, is all predicated on the varying schedules based upon level. So you can see, there's a formula and kind of madness behind the science. These aren't decisions that we just say, ah, today's going to be a snow day, or today's going to be e-learning day. These are the factors that for hours on end, the day prior, the evening prior, that we early morning hours, that we are looking at and considering. And you've heard me say time and time again, student safety is absolutely critical. And I would be the superintendent to go into the summer a day if that meant student safety. So just know that. I'm always going to err on student and staff safety. The other conversation that we've had, and this is something that we're talking about too as a team, and this is a practice that we had to change actually this year, because it's a challenge for me if we are saying that it's unsafe for students, for us to transport students to school. The expectation that we would have on staff that you will risk your life to come into work. It was, it was hypocritical, quite frankly. And I think that's something that we're going to have to continue to work through with all of our employee contracts. And there are staff who have made a request. I'm sure our principals have heard it too. Hey, I just live a block away. Can I come in? Can I, you know, if a staff member comes in, I'm not going to say shame on you. That's, that's fine. Most of us are e-working those days. I mean, that's, unless they take that day off, because by contract, if they want that day to shovel, or they have to, you know, be with their kids, that they actually have to take that day off as a personal leave day. So those are things that we're working through right now, trying to find solutions in contracts too that would also, like we do with our students, do we build some of that into our contract time? But want the board to be aware that as we look at that possibility, that comes with a price tag, right? It doesn't come for free. So, so I wanted to share that with the board, with our community. Those who may be listening to this at a later date, know that, again, student safety, staff safety, is my number one priority as your superintendent when it comes to weather-related situations. And we will do everything that we can to prioritize that. In the event that we can continue to augment those days with e-learning so as to not disrupt family schedules, I'll just be honest with you. When we, if we have to go into the summer, families have already built, you might have bought your spring break tickets that you might want to check those dates. But people buy these things in advance. I'm sorry. People buy these things in advance, and, and folks are planning in advance, reunions, et cetera. And so if we go in two, three days into the summer, we might think it's only two or three days, but that, that's, we are going to lose some kids. We're not, they're just not going to show up, right? And so those are things that we have to think about and take into account. And then lastly, when it comes to the days, we do build in some time into our calendar. So, but next year, I want to remind the board, and Dr. Edwards, just, you can correct me on the exact math, but the days that we've built into next year's calendar for inclement weather, some of those days have been converted into those data release days for our staff. And so our buffer next year is going to be how many days fewer than this year, roughly? Two, I was going to say, two and a half days. So we would be underwater at this point.
We would be into the summer? Is that what you're saying? We would be going?
We would technically have to have some conversation of adjusting schedules during the remainder of the school year, which means augmenting passing times, augmenting maybe lunchtimes, those types of things, to not have to go into days in the summer. And, and I've been in districts where we've had to do both. And, and it's tight. So you, you talk with kids about passing time, particularly at the secondary, who they're already clamoring, there's not enough time, or time to be with my friends during lunch, recess, et cetera. Those are, those are things that we, we can make it through, but it's less than ideal. So, so just wanted to share that update with the board. I know it was a little bit more in the weeds and kind of understanding the science behind all this, but that is a process that we utilize, and I'm open for any questions and can call some of my team members as well.
I have a question. Can you clarify, so is it under Minnesota state statute that we can only have a maximum of five e-learning days? Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we cannot use more than five e-learning days.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
All right. Yes, I do have other updates, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Just real quick. So tonight, you know, we have the standing enrollment, monthly enrollment reports that we give to you, and I just wanted to share an update with the board and the community that part of our interest this year was to work with Morris Leatherman to understand the decisions behind some of the families who may live in our district and are choosing to go elsewhere. And we just recently completed all of those phone calls. And we should have data as an executive team on or around March 24th. We will look at some of that data and be bringing that presentation to you all in April. I, this will likely also be with Morris Leatherman themselves. Additionally, I want to share that we know that it's going to be an important dataset to look at. But I also want to remind the board and our community, we have thousands of families who are choosing to stay in our district. And it's going to be very important to understand why they are doing that as well. And as you know, I don't remember the researcher, but it's a lot easier to play to your vulnerability, or not to play to your vulnerabilities, but to capitalize on your virtuosities, right? We can see that time and time again. That's where you can put your investment. So it's a both and for us. We're starting with those who are not choosing to be with us, but we are equally interested in hearing from the thousands who do, because they have the power to also talk about and share their experiences with many others as well. So I wanted to give that update, so that'll be coming to the board formally in April. And then lastly, we have our second town hall on school finance. That will be April 18th at 7:00 PM at the Prior Lake High School multipurpose room, just around the corner from the office where we held it last time. And this will also be recorded and posted to our YouTube if folks can't make it. But I want to invite everyone to come out, and then if you can't, stream it on YouTube. So, and Director Atkinson, to your question earlier about the budget, we will be bringing our budget work session, our preliminary pass, based upon what's been happening in the legislature to date, and I'm sure a couple of you might speak to some of that. And then based upon your feedback from that work session, we will be able to incorporate that to bring to our community on their second pass with the budget as well. And that is all I have tonight, Chair Crosby.
Thank you. Do we have any administrative reports?
No, no administrative reports tonight.
Okay, that leaves board reports. Can I start with Aria?
Today, or recently at the high school, we have wrapped up our winter committees and are transitioning into our spring committees. This morning, the exec board met together to discuss the committees. We want to keep the things. We want to change or add on. The committees that we know for sure we are going to keep are the Surf and Turf Event, which is a movie on Dam Patch Stadium. We'll have food trucks, games, face painting, and music, so that's always fun. Students look forward to that every year. We'll also be keeping our decision day posts. So one committee and student council posts the plans of future seniors on our Instagram account, which you can follow at Class of 2023. So that's exciting to see where our seniors will be going in the future. And then, in addition, Student Council is partnering up with Junior Optimists Club to put on a bake sale for the recent earthquakes in Turkey and Syria. So that will be happening April 22nd, still timed TBD, but we should be figuring those dates out, or those times out soon. And Student Council is beyond excited to be working with other clubs around the school. So hopefully, we'll have a good turnout for that, so, yes.
Thank you. Great stuff going on. We like to hear all the details of the day-to-day. Board reports, any other board members? There's been a lot of activity and a lot of work with our different associations, so. Who would like to go first?
I'll start.
Okay, thank you.
I attended the ELAC, our Early Learning Advisory Council Committee meeting recently. And leaving that meeting, I asked if there was one thing that they wanted to share with me as a director. And they said, please remember that our district is E through 12. They shared so many positive things. It was, it was really, I haven't attended anything ECFE for many years. My boys, my boys are older, so it was wonderful, them sharing with me how they are the unicorn of the district. They are the ones that stayed in person throughout COVID, and they couldn't speak highly enough about the teamwork and collaboration in their school. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. And the only thing left I have to share would be join us for our finance committee meeting on March 23rd.
I can go. I attended SCALE on Friday. For people listening at home, SCALE stands for Scott County Association of Leadership and Efficiency. They had two speakers. Mayor Briggs spoke about just the future of Prior Lake and what they're going to do to Lakefront Park and some buildings downtown there. The second speaker- The second speaker had a lot more information about property value assessments. That slideshow is out there on SCALE's website. I encourage everybody to go look through that slide deck. Goes into amazing detail on how much work our tax assessors go through to get the valuations correct on our property values, especially in a rising market that we've been in. And just, there was a lot of detail. And I, and, and just even the details that are on your tax statements that most people pay very little attention to. They just see how much they pay. They don't break it down into detail. And so, I highly encourage people to go out and take a look at that, and they are very approachable. I mean, they just kept reiterating that. If you have questions, I mean, the assessor's phone number's on there. They want you to call them. So, I thought that was really good.
Great. Board members?
I, along with Jess, just attended the Curriculum and Learning meeting this evening. And they had some great feedback on the two math curriculums that we are piloting, and they have come to a final decision based on student feedback as well as parent, teacher feedback. And so, they were piloting two programs, both Bridges and Reveal. And I had an opportunity to visit both of those classrooms on Friday, like I said, to see the two programs in work. And very different styles of how math was being taught. And for me, as a parent, I was most intrigued on, like, what we saw tonight, how different kids come up with different answers using different methods. And to me, that was so impressive, to see their little brains, like, working in different ways. The Bridges program, like we saw tonight, uses a lot of manipulatives. So, that is also like something, like a new concept that we didn't necessarily see done in math programs before, which is a lot of different little trinkets and triggates that they use to do different math programs, or math problems. And then, there's also a lot of games, which is really fun to see how a teacher was playing a game, a math game with the students as well. So, with that being said, we've been piloting this program all year long, and it was in 37 classrooms, correct? And I was excited, as long as I know as well, Jess, you can chime in anytime. I was so excited to hear that of all the teachers who were both piloting Reveal and Bridges, 37 of them agreed to move forward with the Bridges program. So, that was very exciting. So, the, so the district Curriculum and Learning team, admin team, will be bringing that forward to us, I believe. I'm sorry, now I forgot the date. Jess, do you have the date?
It's in our next meeting.
Is our next study session? Okay, all right.
Right, April. It's in April.
Okay, April 10th, sorry.
April 10th. All right, Dan?
Yeah, so we'll be, they'll be bringing more information about that forth. Also, on April 10th, there is another District Curriculum meeting, where we will receive updates that will be presented on the Spanish Immersion and the Gifted and Talented Programs. Maybe Jess has something to add.
You know, the only thing I'll add is that I, I, too, was very encouraged that everybody was really on board with this and really coming together, regardless of which pilot program that they, they did and were part of. And as somebody said, this is the start of the work, even after all of this time. And so, that was really exciting. And the last time this was revised was 2012? Yes, Dan's nodding. Okay, 2012. So, this is right along, we had a couple of years of delay, actually. It's usually a seven- to eight-year process for this kind of curriculum change and this pilot. And so, we're due. So, it's really exciting. And the only other thing I'll also add is our Equity Advisory Committee, we're working on our charter. And so, which is basically our governing policy that helps guide our work as a committee. So, we're putting the finishing touches on that for our next meeting, and then we'll bring it to the board for full approval in July. So, excited for y'all to see that as well.
Thank you. Other board members? Any reports?
Went to the Capitol. So, Dr. Thomas, Director Crosby and myself, and Dr. Edwards, went to the Capitol. We sat in on a few sessions, the Senate Education Finance, and I believe the Education Committee, Policy Committee. And then, we met with most of our representatives. And if we didn't meet with the representatives, we met with their representative of, in their office. And overall, it was very, very interesting. It was encouraging to hear the banter back and forth. It was encouraging that our representatives, both in the Senate and the House, listened to us. And again, our primary message was, we want the maximum funding with no mandates, so that we can actually manage the finances ourself, and the additional funds according to the individual needs of each district.
Well said. That, that sums up the visit as far as I'm concerned as well. I'll just add that last Thursday, we had our Board Professional Development Retreat. You all know this, but just to recap for our listeners, we spent a couple hours with, with our General Counsel to kind of review our roles and responsibilities as it relates to our work, because those laws are always changing and evolving, and we're a relatively newish board. So, that was helpful. And then, we spent an hour and a half with a superintendent from another district who has experience doing training with developing strong teams, building relationships within our, our group so that we can move forward with trust and, and have some good discourse, and be respectful, and follow the law, which is why we're here, to make our district great. That sums up board reports, unless anyone has anything else.
I just have a question for the Finance, for the Finance Committee. And maybe it's more directed to Tammy Frederickson. The two additional, two or three additional members we added to the Finance Committee, who, they applied to the Finance Committee. Do you know when we'll be seeing their applications, or when those decisions will be made?
I will meet with Director Burnick and Director Boyan, who are the two representatives on the Finance Committee. We only got four applications, so I have a recommendation of a couple of them that I think would be a good addition. So, if I can connect with you two, then we can get that done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looking to future events, we have an early release this Thursday, and our next board study session is March 28th at 6:00 PM. April 18th, the Town Hall on School Finance. Oh, no, that's the right date.
Yep.
Yep, Tuesday, not Monday, due to availability. And before I adjourn, I just am going to give a shout out to Director Musman, because it's her birthday, and we need to formally embarrass her. And she keeps getting younger, and I can't figure it out. So, thank you all for coming tonight, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Take a vote for adjournment. Oh, I'm sorry. I can't make that call on my own.
No, you can't.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So made.
Director France, second in, by Director Vay, last quest, on paper.
Aye.
Opposed. Pass the 7-0. I'm sorry about that.